Good evening, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Oxford Preparatory Academy, June 28, 2018. Open session at 6:00 PM, closed session at 6:10 PM, returning to open session at 7:10 PM. Meeting location is Oxford Preparatory Academy Saddleback Valley Campus, 22882 Lumaut Drive, Lake Forest, California, and teleconference location, Oxford Preparatory Academy South Orange County Campus, 23000 via Santa Maria, Mission Viejo, California. The public, including public attending at teleconference location, are invited to address the board regarding items listed on the agenda. Comments on an agenda item will be accepted during consideration of that item, or prior to consideration of the item in the case of a closed session item. Please turn in comment cards to the board secretary prior to the item you wish to speak on. Preliminary item, call to order, roll call. Raymond Jackson, Vice Chair.
Present.
Priscilla Trichet, Secretary.
Present.
Joshua Teepel, Treasurer.
Present.
Mary Campos, Member.
Present.
And Joseph Haney, Chairman. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, face the flag, and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is approval of agenda for regular board meeting for June 28, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for regular board meeting?
I move to approve the agenda for the regular board meeting for June 28, 2018.
Do I have a...
I'll second that, I'm sorry.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Item B, public announcement of reason for closed session. Closed session for discussion of possible action. A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Government Code 54956.9D4; B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Government Code 54956.9D2, two matters; and C, public employment, positions, chancellor, and dean. Have we received any cards to speak on closed session items? All right, seeing none, we are going to go into closed session at 6:12 PM. All right, the board returns from closed session at 7:49 PM. Public report of action taken in closed session is, there was no action taken in closed session. Takes us to item B, communications. Number one, comments from the Board of Director, we'll start at the far end of the table. Mr. Jackson, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Campos, do you have any comments?
No comment.
Mr. Teepel, do you have any comments?
Just briefly, we get a lot of emails from parents out there and staff and whatnot, and you're always thanking us for the time that we commit to this and whatnot. I just wanted to reciprocate and apologize for being so late for coming out from a closed session. Thank you for your patience and for being here tonight and for contributing your time.
Thank you, Mr. Teepel, good points. And Ms. Trichet?
No comments.
Okay, and I don't have any either. That takes us to the next item, comments from the interim executive director.
I just wanted to give a couple of updates on things so that it goes on our record and in our minutes. And the first thing is, I'm going to learn how to speak into the mic at the right distance. We've had some storage of furniture in Chino. As of tomorrow, all of our storage will be empty, and we are closing those storage units down, and all of that furniture has been given to various educational organizations, including CVUSD. The Chino closure outstanding bills. We have one last bill coming from legal counsel, that was in March, and the board will be taking action on that. But all of the bills associated with the closure of the Chino campus have been paid, and we have no outstanding bills. We are still working on leasing our Corona office out so that we can empty that office and move down here. And we have located some potential places down here at a lesser rate, but at this point in time, our plan is to sublet and move out of that office as soon as we can. We have items in Yorba Linda's storage area that we are moving over the next week to a storage area here. Those are files and boxes of important papers, and sadly, we don't have enough storage on this campus or on the other campus at this point in time to be able to house it. But we are looking at a reduced storage area, and there are some frivolous items that are in storage that we will allow each of the campuses to take a look at to see if they want holiday items and things like that. And whatever is not taken, then we will dispose of. So we are actually closing out on anything that is up in the Chino area and related to Yorba Linda and the Corona area. So I wanted to make that comment so that it shows up in our minutes.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Do we have any comments for items not on the agenda? No, all right. Takes us to D, items scheduled for consent. One, minutes from regular board meeting, 6:1818 and 6:2518.
6:26, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, oh, now you don't have my glasses on. 6:2618, thank you. Two, warrant report for May 2018, and three, the personnel report. The motion, the item for us is to approve items scheduled for consent, do I have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to approve these two. Can we talk about them, though, after I make a motion?
We absolutely may, we first have to have a second.
I second.
Okay. We actually can't, we have to pull the items. You'd have to withdraw your motion, and then pull the items you wish to discuss.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, which item would you like to pull? Or items do you wish to pull from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull both minutes from June 18th and June 26th.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent as so modified?
I move to approve the warrant report for May 2018 and the personnel report.
Do I have a second to approve the warrant report and the personnel report?
I have a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Well, when can I ask questions about that?
You have to pull them.
Which did you have an issue with, Mr. Jackson?
Well, I just have questions about all of them. I have questions about these $10,000, $10,500,000 payments.
No, I'm sorry, which item did you have questions on, the warrant report?
Yes. But I don't want to, I don't want to pull them all out, I just have questions about them.
Well, that's the way we have to do it, you have to do them one at a time.
All right.
So can I revise my motion, then? Well, I, actually, I'm going to make this even harder because I was going to abstain from the minutes from the regular board meeting, so maybe we should do them all three, set them three parts.
Can we, do we consent on the personnel, or do we want to discuss that too?
I...
No, I'm good.
So I'll move to approve the personnel report.
Fantastic, do I have a second to approve the personnel report?
I second.
All those in favor of the personnel report say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Now, we will go in order, and the first item for us for approval is the minutes from the regular board meeting, 6:1818 and 6:2618. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, do you have comments on the minutes?
So, it seems like we talk a lot about accountability, and every board meeting, we get parents and stakeholders who stand up here and they ask questions. And then I am biting my tongue because we can't give them feedback, as an example. And we oftentimes do a great job of documenting what it is that they want or have questions about, or whatever. But I feel like there's no, there's not a lot of really good follow-up to things like, specifically in the minutes for June 16th, Priscilla, Mrs. Trichet asked Mr. Diaz to please look into applying for various federal school grants. And it sure would be nice to have that, you know, I'm thinking like a global list of follow-up things to say. Because if you have that on your list of things to do, then you're going to, you're going to do it. You're going to say, hey, here's the 14 grants that we need, here's the deadlines to apply for them, and put that on your calendar to get it done. Not just to philosophically, hey, would you mind applying for some grants? Of course you wouldn't. Okay, great, let's move on, and then we forget.
So I think we'd have to direct staff, do we direct staff to do that?
Well, she directed him, and I'm sure he said, no problem, but where's the, where are the teeth in that?
So it's like creating a task management system where we can track.
Some, well, I don't want to, that sounds mean, but some kind of list of, and I think previously I had been looking to Jennifer Ladaga to do that kind of thing, to keep track of us, right? So when we do those kinds of things, how do we know it's getting done? And I don't want to, in nine months from now, say, oh, we missed a grant opportunity that had we talked about this and thought about it ahead of time. And I know I'm singling you out right now, and I don't mean to do that, I'm just saying.
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a suggestion that an item, a standing item on the agenda be a report of any pending grants and those that have been applied for, as a report.
Because I think previously you were mentioning, Oswaldo, and I don't know if this was an open session topic or just when you and I were talking, but that's one of the things that our new back office provider can do?
Yes, that is correct, and we are actually going to be working with Exed on making sure that whatever grants we can apply and that we are applying for, and that we don't rely just on whatever sources of funds we have as a...
Okay, good, and just to be clear about that, somebody needs to poke them in the belly button so we know. I mean, I'm counting on $400,000 worth of grants that we're going to get this year that we've never gotten before. And the reason why we're going to get it is because we know about them, we chase them down, and because our financials are so awesome, and so crisp, and so clean, and so easy to digest, that it'll be easy for us to bring those in. And so that's the kind of number that I have in my head, you know, so I'm going to get really happy when we get there, and then I might be Grouchy Bear, you know, on that continuum. But I just want to be clear about that, because it's out there, and we can do it, but we got to follow up.
So I'm going to suggest that there be a regularly scheduled item on each agenda that has current and future grants that have either been applied for or that are looming.
But I think, Mr. Jackson, it goes to something larger than just the grants. Sometimes we ask for information to be reported back to us, or to, you know, report, or we direct staff to do something. I think what you're saying is not use the grants as an illustration, but overall, when we direct or give instruction for something to be done, know that it in fact gets done, and we have a report back to us that says, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in here, it could be some sort of a matrix that we're able to access before the meeting that goes back and says, oh, okay, that report got done, and I can get it, or we now have the names of these people, we can look at it, or it's in process.
Okay.
And I know everybody hates this, but I'm tempted to create a Google document right here and share it with everybody on the planet, and I'm going to type it in here as we do it, you know what I mean? So I'll own it, if we can't get this done, because it's important. We have, we cover so much important ground, and I just want to be sure we're following up. And one of those things, because I don't want to take up too much time, is, you know, so Pam Thompson asked a question at the last board meeting, she, in her comment card, and I would just like to know that we answered those questions. Just as somebody says, you know what, we answered that. She asked a good question, a noble question, and we answered it. That's all. So who's going to own that? Can I ask who's going to own that, or do I just go right into the warrant report?
Past practice, when we had, when we had a board secretary that was permanent, there was a follow-up meeting after every board meeting with a list of, they direct a staff to do this, Lisa, that's yours, they direct a staff to do this, Kathleen, that's you. And we would just go through everything that was discussed and follow up, and you would either get a response from one of us as a full board, or there would be a report out if it was something that we were able to report out. And so at this time, we're working a little differently, and I think when Kathleen makes an introduction, that'll speak a little bit to that.
But it's not something we can't do.
Nope, it's something that we have done in the past.
But we can share it with the board, too, because I think that if...
Well, I can tell you, I've never seen it before, and I'm not, yeah, and I'm not super, I've not seen a bunch of follow-up.
So you're wanting to see the list that we create post-board meeting?
Because we get asked those questions, I'm assuming you get asked, and we get emails and...
So I think the key point is, when items are requested, that then there's a date by to report on, so everybody's on the same page, that this item needs closure, or if it can't be closed by that date, then there's an update as to why that date can't be met.
Just so we're managing expectations, and there's a system of accountability in place. So, okay, did you have further questions or comments on the minutes?
The warrant, no, not about the minutes, but the warrant report.
Okay, we have, the motion is to approve the minutes.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, any further discussion on the minutes?
On the June 18 minutes, it says that I left the meeting, the closed session meeting at 5:40. I think it was more like 6:15, just a little thing.
Okay. Any further comment or question on the minutes?
Can we call for a roll call vote since I'm going to abstain?
We absolutely may. So, I think we need to, Mr. Jackson, you need to pull back your motion. There would be a motion then to approve the minutes as so modified.
So I'd like to...
Withdraw your motion.
Take my, I want to withdraw my motion, and now I want to make a new motion, which is to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay. We'll go in order, then, down at the far end. Oh, we need a second, sorry.
I second.
Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Campos?
Yes.
Mr. Teepel?
I abstain.
Ms. Trichet?
Yes.
And Mr. Haney, yes. This motion passes unanimously, which takes us now to the warrant report. Do I have a motion to approve the warrant report?
I'll move to approve the warrant report.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, you had something on that you wish to discuss?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So, so we're looking at warrant report from May, is there, is there any way to get this? We're almost in July, is there any way to get this faster?
Typically speaking, the warrant report comes out at the end of each month for the following month. So this would be the, we're always in one month of rear of, as far as what checks are cut, and the warrants are, report out the checks that were cut for that month.
Okay, then I just have a couple of, so we have $10,500,000 to leadership and associates. That was, I'm assuming, the second payment?
That was the final payment, yes.
Okay. And we, as a part of our contract, I recall, when we approved that, they have a refill obligation in that, is that right?
I need to go back and take a look at the initial contract that they filled out because the second contract that was done with them in January of this year had no language like that.
Okay.
Thought they had a contract from before. Okay. Okay.
So there's not a refill provision for that?
That was the one that you offered.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I see we paid $5,900 because of our homework deficiency? It's a pretty nasty fine for not turning in your homework. Oh, the homework deficiency forms are $6,000?
We must be giving out a lot of homework deficiency forms.
Can we just put them on an iPad or something, we just send you an email when you don't do it?
That's a really great idea.
No, come on, really, $6,000 bucks for that? All right. What's the equipment rental that we have for Wells Fargo, is $21,000?
It's our copy machines.
I thought that was the lease through Kiosera.
Yes, but also there's another lease that goes through Wells Fargo that includes copying machines and other, it's just copy machines.
So we have Kiosera for some, and then there's other?
Wells Fargo, it's the Wells Fargo vendor service. So Kiosera is the vendor, and Wells Fargo manages the account.
That's the equipment finance, so they're Kiosera copiers that we finance through Wells Fargo.
Okay, so why would we see the Kiosera contracts in here separately? They're not in here, but they've been in previous board packages. Where the Kiosera contracts?
I don't know.
Because you buy them from Kiosera, but you finance them effectively for Wells Fargo.
Okay. Okay.
I think there's two different things that we're talking about. One is the rental, and the other is a monthly service fee.
Well, it's like 19, oh, the Kiosera pays us, charges us per click. So the Wells Fargo's for the equipment to have it.
Right.
And then you pay per click.
Yep.
Oh my gosh, okay, so we're paying a ton of money for...
Yet another reason to be digital.
Okay.
But it should be noted, this is the reduced payment, right?
It used to be 19, and it went down...
This is the last of the full rate.
Right.
Yeah, this was the higher of the amounts, and then it went down to 16 or something, okay. And then, is this our last payment to Procopio? Can we, can I request that we just do a global catch-up with Procopio? Stop paying all these little invoices, we do a big catch-up with them?
They are done, and this was their final payment at the time that we severed our relationship with them. So they went back and calculated everything that apparently we owed.
Okay, I'll stop with that. With the exception of the $86,000 Prop 39 refund. What is that?
That was the Prop 39 refund that was from the Chino closing where the Prop 39 funds were not used for energy efficiency upgrades at that campus due to the closing of the school. So we had to give the money back.
Got it.
Is there any further discussion on the warrant report? Seeing none, the motion for the board is to approve the warrant report, it has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Next up is E, presentations, and we have the financial update for May 2018.
And Andy Stern will not be here to give us his final financial update for May. It is in the packet and is there. And Oswaldo, did you want to speak to it at all, or wait until we do our budget adoption?
Do we get a discount because he's not doing his job? No?
It's a sick day. So are we skipping the financial report until we do the budget?
Unless the board has specific questions, usually of course Andy is the one that presents the budget, I'll be happy to go over certain numbers, but...
You review this with him?
I usually review it myself. What I do is I request a download of all of their general ledger details, and I review it myself. And, but of course, Char Impex's job is to actually go over the financials that they appear. And...
Well, they haven't hesitated to disappoint us in the past, though. Do, so you do not review this with them, you review it on your own?
I review it on my own, that is correct.
Have you reviewed these?
I have reviewed some of the numbers, and what I do is I prepare a trend analysis, compare the months, and just make sure that the numbers are more or less within what we have, and identify any areas of expenses where I see that it's out of whack or amounts that are not necessarily in line, which we should have, and those I question with my team.
Okay.
Sounds like we are going to let that show up in the course of discussing the budget. That takes us to item F, items for discussion and/or action. First one is approve Theodora Oranger Legal Services invoice. The board is required to approve any expenditures that exceed $15,000. The invoice from Theodora Oranger for legal services performed in March 2018 in the amount of $29,618.46 is brought to the board for consideration. It's recommended that the Board of Directors approve the Theodora Oranger Legal Services invoice. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the, sorry, the invoice of Theodora Orin...
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this matter?
Just to be clear, this is for all the work before CCSA, before the CCSA agreement, is that right?
That is correct, this is work that was done prior to CCSA entering into agreement with us to pick up the rest of the invoice or legal fees in relationship to the appeal.
Is it ever appropriate to ask an attorney to give us an invoice where we are to date, please?
Absolutely.
Before we start doing deals, because, right? Like the CCSA thing, they say, hey, CCSA's got you covered, you're all good, and then they surprise you with a bill for all the work that didn't got done before CCSA showed up?
Yes.
Is this the final Chino bill?
This is the, this is the final bill.
On all matters.
On all matters.
Oswaldo, what's this going to, was this included in our Chino forecasted account balance?
Yes, it is included, both in the forecast and...
So what's the account balance?
It's reflected in the financials.
So what's the account balance in Chino after we pay this? And the other outstanding checks?
We are estimating that as of the end of this month, which is going to be tomorrow, we'll end up with $200,000. I can give you the exact amount.
No, I'm okay, that's good.
And that's for the campus entirely, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was going to say, just to clarify, this will be paid out of the Chino budget? That's the main.
That is correct.
Yes, that is correct. We are not sharing it with the other schools, no.
And that's with the campus entirely closed out, no new surprises?
That's correct.
And we have a letter to that effect, right?
We do have a letter to that effect.
From the district?
From the district.
Okay.
And somebody else worked with Jonathan Hill, I never saw him before.
I believe he's with the partner assigned to this matter.
So he just gets the bill? Like you're my partner, so...
Can I clarify something? We have been closed out with the district, so we have no surprises with the district.
Got it, but what...
One never knows.
I'm saying, who's this Jonathan Hill fellow? I've never seen him, but I see a $14,500 line item for him and all his work.
Is that in Theodora Oranger?
Yes.
He's one of their lead attorneys.
I believe he was the partner assigned to this matter.
So he just is the invisible guy behind the scenes, okay. All right.
So the motion before the board is to approve the Theodora Oranger Legal Services invoice, it has got a second. Any further questions or comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Item F2, approve Connor Fletcher and Hedencamp LLP Legal Service invoice. The board is required to approve any expenditures that exceed $15,000. The invoice from Connor Fletcher and Hedencamp LLP for legal services performed in May 2018 in the amount of $30,940.14 is brought to the board for consideration. It's recommended that the Board of Directors approve Connor Fletcher and Hedencamp LLP Legal Services invoice. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion or questions?
So on the, without giving anything confidential away, there's a bunch of handwritten notes on here, and they say Chino or SOC or both. Whose handwriting is that on that, on the invoice?
Mine, because I'm familiar with the account, so I went through it and shared with Oswaldo how that's done.
Okay, so you did the allocation between the two campuses?
Because I'm familiar with...
And I asked her to do it.
And that was before Mr. Diaz was with us full-time, so he wouldn't have been privy to all of the goings-on.
That's why I was asking, I wanted to make sure someone that knew what they were doing was doing it. Thank you.
And thank you for that level of detail, by the way, this is very helpful. Okay, what are you waiting for, Joseph? Waiting for me?
I was, but...
Oh.
Are you ready?
Oh yeah, I'm good.
Okay, I thought you were...
Sorry.
All right, so the motion that is brought before us is to approve the invoice for Connor Fletcher and Hedencamp LLP. It has been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Item F3 is approve Connor Fletcher and Hedencamp LLP Legal Services invoice. The board is required to approve any expenditures that exceed $15,000. The invoice from Connor Fletcher and Hedencamp LLP for legal services performed in May 2018 in the amount of $23,097.46 is brought to the board for consideration. It's recommended that the Board of Directors approve Connor Fletcher and Hedencamp LLP Legal Services invoice. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, you go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second his motion.
Any questions or comments? None?
Can we get a discount like we do with Simmons?
We, well, they gave us a reduced rate.
Oh yeah, they did, all right, nevermind, quiet, pay it right away. They did, they gave us a super deal, right?
So, motion is to approve the invoice to Connor Fletcher and Hedencamp LLP, it has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Item F4, approve... Item F. Four, approve Young, Mini and Core LLP Legal Services invoice. The board is required to approve any expenditures that exceed fifteen thousand dollars. The invoice from Young, Mini and Core LLP for legal services performed in May two thousand eighteen in the amount of eighteen thousand, eighty-hundred and seventy dollars and six cents brought to the board for consideration. Do I have a mo- It's recommended the Board of Directors approve the Young, Mini, Core and Core LLP Legal Services invoice. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any questions or conversations, discourse?
Why is the date scratched? I mean, who, is it you, Lisa, who did that? In, you wrote it in?
It was a mistake. It should have been May.
Yeah, it should have been May.
Okay.
So it got fixed on the agenda that the community is seeing.
Yeah.
But yours had been printed prior.
Okay.
So on your agenda, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. So the actual, um...
The services as indicated on the invoice are from May.
Okay.
All right. This motion that is before the board is to approve the Young, Mini and Core LLP Legal Services invoice. It has been seconded. Without, if there's no further questions or comments?
There is.
Okay.
I just want to be sure, Oswaldo, you're gonna take that five percent discount, right, buddy?
I, I will request that discount from you.
Okay.
As clarified? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Item F. Five is approve classified and/or confidential and administrative salary schedule. Oxford staff has done comparisons with surrounding districts to create a salary schedule for classified, confidential and administrative staff, which aligns closely with Irvine Unified School District for similar positions, as was used for the certificated salary and puts all salaries within the top twenty-five percent of other districts and includes annual step increases. The board will consider for approval with an effective date of July one, two thousand eighteen, presented by Kathleen Doherty.
Are there any cards before I begin? Okay. So, well, we spoke about this, um, at our last meeting. This is a salary chart that handles the, um, administrative positions and also the, the non, the classified positions and the difference between classified and administrative. Uh, certificated managers fall under the administrative piece with an administrative credential or, um, a supervision evaluation, uh, component. And, uh, except for the school psychologist, which is often placed on the administrative salary schedule. And confidential employees handle, um, personnel issues and/or confidential information. And classified are employees that are non-certificated. In other words, they don't have to have a certificated to do, a certificate to do their job. Uh, this salary schedule is the first time that OPA has had a salary schedule that looks like this, where there is an annual increase. There were six steps, which is the average step, put on to the administrative side for the confidential and classified salary schedule, which is on the second part of it. Um, there were two additional steps that were added, so it now goes up to eight steps. This includes a longevity bonus after five years and for each year annually of thirty-five hundred dollars because typically speaking, classified do not get a master's stipend bonus or a doctorate stipend bonus. This also includes positions that we may or may not have or may or may not fill in case we have them. And, uh, there are some job descriptions that are aligned with it in the next item, the next set of items from below. Having this salary schedule identifies the number of days that the position works and it, and it identifies what an entry-level position would look like and then the steps moving forward. It doesn't necessarily mean that the people that fill these positions would be it at the beginning level. If this salary schedule is, is approved, then we will be meeting with each of the, um, the folks that would land on the salary schedule and determine where their starting pay would be based on the number of years of experience they have and the number of years that they have with OPA. This has been closely aligned with the Irvine one and, and we did a lot of work with the comparisons. If you'll recall, two meetings ago, we presented some comps from five different districts. So this represents the, the higher end of those, uh, those comps and the positions also, uh, the salary takes into account some of the unique positions that we have that other districts don't have. Uh, and, uh, and it's very competitive and it is, uh, very well thought out in the sense of addressing, uh, all of the different potentials. This is not an end-all salary schedule because as new positions may be created, it will be added to the salary schedule. Uh, and if at any point in time the, uh, board decides to give, um, percent increases to the salary schedule, then all salary schedules that have been approved would get that same percent increase, so everything would go up. But at this point in time, uh, it represents, um, the best comparison that we have for the positions that we have and it helps to right-size our dist- our, our organization and it also gives an annual increase to all of our employees as well.
Thank you. So the motion before the board, the recommendation for the Board of Directors is that we approve the new classified and administrative salary schedule. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the administrative salary schedule.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Now we can discuss. Anybody have anything they would like to say on this matter?
My one concern that I have is that we would be asking anybody to take a pay cut at this time. So perhaps what I would like to see is that we revoke the motion and that we adopt this salary schedule subject to a grandfathering clause where people who would, would stay at their current salary, even if it's ahead of where they would be less placed on this, would not receive increases until they caught up with where they are on the salary schedule.
That would be difficult for two positions on the salary schedule. Uh, but for everybody else, I will be meeting individually with them and we can certainly keep them where they're at and grandfather, grandfather until their years are caught up with, um, what they are currently receiving and then they can move forward on the schedule.
And in addition to that, I'd like, in those discussions, let's make sure that the individuals understand what they would need to do to move up to those next levels um, so that there's no misunderstandings going into it. And then moving forward, everybody's on the same page.
So we're talking about, uh, two specific positions that would be exempted from the grandfather clause, is that right?
It's not possible to have them grandfather in and be on the salary schedule.
Why is that? Yeah, I understand. Because they're pretty radical departures from...
They're very radical departures from what they have been getting and what the comp, the comps, uh, are. Yeah, even starting at the, at step eight on the salary schedule.
Yeah. So basically, we'd need to, uh... After we do all the motion removal process, we would need to make a new motion for, to approve it with the exception of those two positions, is that right?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that, that you direct me to make sure that anybody that is on the salary schedule and is in a position that can be frozen, be frozen and that you adopt the salary schedule as is.
What did she just say?
I'm not sure I'm understanding.
I, I'm gonna suggest that, that you're adopting the salary schedule because you have two different things. One is the salary schedule, the other is a directive from the board that when I work with the individuals that get placed on the salary schedule, that I put them at a level, uh, which is competitive to what they are getting now and freeze them in place until they catch up, which is separate from the salary schedule.
So I would like to suggest we look at it in a different way, which is to freeze, um, all as we discussed and then have the discussions moving forward of what that looks like to move up steps. And for the two positions you're referring to, we have a conversation about them and what that impact is versus general, so we can all decide and make the right decision on that.
I sense that there's some confusion on the board, at least perhaps it's just me that we don't understand why there's two employees that are held out of that pool.
It's because they're, so if, let's say that the comps say that you should be making thirty thousand and you're making some considerably more than that. So it would make sense to grandfather somebody who's maybe within range, but if you're just, if it's a radical difference between the comps and, and what you're making currently...
But I had asked for that information at the last meeting. And so now we're asked to make a vote on that without that information.
And I gave it, I presented that information. Um, the, I, I can identify, uh, the, the management positions, for example, um, are, uh, have been paid at a significantly higher level than the surrounding comps indicate that they should be paid. So it would be the certificated managers that would be taking a, uh, potential reduction. And the coordinator position is currently being paid at approximately, um... Placed on the highest level, approximately fifteen thousand less, or excuse me, more than, than our highest level does as a coordinator. And the other position that is, um, being paid at a higher level than the comps indicate it should be paid at, are the registrar attendance clerks and office clerk. Um, and that is, uh, at the highest level would be a dollar less per hour, going to the highest level. So you can make a motion to add another two steps, which would accommodate that. Then I can freeze everyone.
So if we add two steps, we don't, nobody who would be affected by this schedule would take a pay cut?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we already have a motion? We had a motion on this.
And that has to be acted on.
That would have to be acted on or revoked. And then a new motion entered if we wished to add two additional steps to account for all the employees that would be impacted by this vote. Who made the motion?
Is that right, Kathleen? Is she saying that right?
She's saying that right.
Is there, what are you, what are your thoughts on that, Kathleen?
I'm fine with adding two additional steps.
Okay.
It would, it would...
We accomplish what we're after.
It would accomplish what you're after. And then the, and then the person would be frozen for about seven years. And Oswaldo, how is that going to affect the overall budget?
It's actually reflected on, uh, on, uh, the budget. Once, uh, you, uh, we, we actually move to review and approve, uh, the budgets for both, uh, SOC and, uh, Saddleback, you will see the impact, the five-year impact of that.
With the, with the, with the added steps also?
That is correct.
And as of now, if we do that, it's not gonna jeopardize anything?
Uh, we were very careful to actually make sure that, uh, we are implementing this correctly, that's one. But second of all, that, uh, we reduce the expenses necessary to make sure that, uh, we were, first of all, in balance and that we had, uh, also an additional, uh, cushion.
Okay. So when you, when you say reducing expenses, um, what are you referring to exactly? Like looking at other section, section but not people, right?
Uh, we, we can definitely discuss this during the, uh, the budget process, but, uh, I don't know if you want me to go to that part right now.
Okay.
I believe that's exactly what I was going to talk about, that we can definitely talk now.
Okay.
So, just so, so I understand, because I'm, now I'm a little confused. So what, what we're talking about with the two-step process, and I'm not clear what those two steps are, but based on...
I, I would be adding steps nine and ten. Right now it goes to step eight.
Steps nine and ten?
Nine, if you're going horizontally across and there's a three percent increase each year that the person works for OPA. So, um...
Understand, no, okay, now I understand. Now I understand. So, but, but the, the magnitude of the impact on the budget is, my understanding, it's like twenty thousand or twenty-one thousand a year?
Minimal.
To, to freeze these.
That's correct.
Okay.
And is that freezing all of them? Are we still, how are we handling those two?
That would be freezing the, the employees that would be remaining at their current pay and waiting until their years catch up with their salary.
So those people that are, are, are making more than what the comps say may be frozen for some time, is what you're saying?
Depending on where they fall on the salary schedule.
I understand.
But there is an extra bonus on this one that gives, after five years of service, a thirty-five hundred dollar, um, annual, um, bonus for stipend. So that, so that makes up for it.
So it's analogous in the private sector when you work in a high cost of living area and you get relocated to a lower cost of living area and they don't cut your salary, they freeze it. And you may not see a raise for years, but you're living better than your peers would have been just because your salary is higher than it would have been if you'd started working in that second location from the get-go.
All right.
So who made the motion?
I...
Mr. Who? Oh. So, Mr.?
No, I thought I made the mo- Oh, Ms. Shea made the motion.
Okay. Ms. Shea, would you be interested in withdrawing your motion?
You can say no.
You can't say no.
I'm withdrawing my motion for what reason? I mean, I just wanted to know what, I got confused with all the discussion going on right now.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. People.
I was gonna say, all you do is, oh, is you withdraw your current motion and then we'll make a new motion incorporating the new stuff.
So I withdraw my, my previous motion.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll move to approve the salary schedule with the, the, uh, two additional steps as, as previously discussed.
Do I have a second?
I second.
So the motion before the board is to approve the salary schedule with two additional steps. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Those two additional steps were just for the confidential classified or should I also add them for the administrative side?
I thought it was for both. Come on, getting confused.
I thought it was for both, too.
I thought we were doing this across the board.
Good job, Joseph. You broke it.
I just need some direction.
So, it, can, I'm gonna, uh, answer your question with the question, is it, is this, if it's, if it covers both, is it still the, the twenty-one thousand dollar type of exposure?
Yes.
Okay, then I, then I think we all, what, I understood it to be, to be both then.
Is there anybody on the board who dissents with that?
So I believe it's both administrative and classified.
Okay.
All right. Item six is approve, approve job description and corresponding placement on the salary schedule for the following positions. Momni Cafe has done a personnel analysis as requested by the board and has updated or created job descriptions to correspond to the adopted organizational chart, which include job responsibilities, duties, requirements, work year and placement on the appropriate salary schedule. The board will consider the approval of each of the job descriptions listed below and the corresponding placement on the appropriate salary schedule, presented by Kathleen Doherty.
These first set of job descriptions just correspond to the organizational chart. There are still others that need to be created or updated. The placement in the job description on the salary schedule indicates the first level placement, but all placements are made, uh, by determining the qualifications of the candidate and the experience they bring in. Um, these job descriptions correspond to, uh, the duties of the current positions and also, um, other duties that were considered as being important to these particular job titles. And, um, I'm gonna recommend that you, uh, either approve one at a time or approve them, um, individually, but they're, uh, they all are aligned now to the expectations of what we have for these positions, including, um, entry-level skills, um, certification requirements and/or licenses, uh, required responsibilities and ability to perform those responsibilities and, and job requirements in general. It also identifies, uh, who is the supervisor and the work year. And by who, I mean the class, not the person.
All right, do I, it is recommended the Board of Directors approve the job description and corresponding placement on the salary schedule of the positions listed below. Do I have a motion at this time?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Any discussion on this matter?
So I have a question. If we approve these, these aren't necessarily jobs that we're filling now. These are jobs that are part of what we would either need now or in the future?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want a clarification.
And what would be the process if we... What would be the process if we get four to six months down the road and we decide that we need to change the job description? Or we need to eliminate it, replace it with something different? Or it merges into something entirely different? Do we go through this process again?
Not, yes, nothing is ever set in stone and everything can be revised.
Okay. All right, any further questions or comments? All right. Motion before the board is to approve job description and corresponding placement on the salary schedule for the positions listed below, which include Director of Technology, Director of Instruction and Student Support Services, Executive Administrative Assistant, Coordinator of Public Relations and Communications, Student Information Services and Database Technician, Technology Technician, Human Resources Manager, Administrative Assistant, Administrative Clerks, and Facilities Manager. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed, this motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Step one, there are more job descriptions coming, so this is a real milestone.
F seven, approve local control accountability plan, LCAP, for Oxford Preparatory Academy, Saddleback Valley. As part of the local control funding formula, LCFF, school districts, county offices of education, and charter schools are required to develop, adopt, and annually update a three-year local control and accountability plan, LCAP, beginning on July one, two thousand fourteen. The LCAP is required to identify goals and measure progress for unduplicated student subgroups across multiple performance indicators. It is approved, recommended the Board of Directors approve the local control accountability plan, LCAP, for Oxford Preparatory Academy, Saddleback Valley. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Ms. Oregon would like to discuss?
I would like to ask Mrs. Lohoff to come up and, and share a little bit about this plan. If you recall, did she just leave? She, she really didn't want to talk about it?
Mrs. Lohoff has left the room.
Okay. The, the, this is a two-step process. You had a public hearing on this a week ago. And this has to be approved first in conjunction with the budget, which you will see next for SV. This plan takes into account the goals that this particular school has for improvement in the eight criteria area. Tammy, do you want to? And Tammy has worked with Dr. Hall and her, and Mr. Bridges, along with the admin from the SOC site, to more fully develop this plan. We do have some corrections that we have made to the plan. Once the plan is approved, it has to be sent to OCDE for their final review and approval. This plan can be changed at any time along the way, as well as all of our other documents. So that if we get into the plan and find out that there's something that we wanted to put in there as a goal, we can still do that. If we find out that, that there's something that was in there that doesn't meet our needs, we can certainly take it out at that point in time. And this reflects, this goal reflect, excuse me, this plan reflects the entire budget. But it also identifies those funds that are used for our supplemental grant funds that we're required to have in here. And it also reflects the amount that we're putting into our, our growth goals, but it is not reflective of the entire budget. And so sometimes people confuse the difference between why aren't we spending all of the money we have? And again, this is just those improvement areas that we're looking at rather than the entire budget. Is there anything that you would like to highlight?
No, I know that we did a, I'll move over. I know that in preparing this document, there was a little bit of history that had to be done because the, the last document that was submitted, there were some areas of ambiguity that we really needed to clear up. We paid a lot of attention to our LCAP survey from our stakeholders in preparing this now, so...
There were a couple of questions asked from the last meeting about when they did the annual analysis, why the initial projected amount to be spent was so far under the actuals that were being projected. And remember, these are still estimated actuals because we haven't closed the books yet to find out what we have actually spent. And so Tammy and I went through those areas and realized that the, the rationale behind that is that the amount that was to be spent was very much under projected over what was actually needed. And those have been corrected in the goals when you read the actual goals themselves.
So the draft before us, where the significant number of these, what's budgeted is off from actual by a significant magnitude?
Thirty thousand dollars or more.
Yeah, I'm looking at one at forty. That's, where's, that's, that's correct, reflected in the version that we don't have.
No, that, that, there is a, oh, well, what you don't see is the changes. And so I don't know if you're able to, you have the change, Dr.?
Okay, well, I'm looking, for example, if Goal One has a budget of twelve thousand four hundred and estimated fourteen thousand seven forty-one, that's relatively close. But if I look at Goal Two has a budgeted expenditure of five thousand two hundred and five dollars, but an estimated actual expenditure of forty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Right, and if you scroll down to the page fifteen at the bottom, you'll see that it asks you to explain the material difference between those. And, and so that's where we have added in, this is the rationale, is that the budgeted amount did not include salaries that was necessary to make this goal a reality. And so that is the material difference. And in most of the cases where there was that huge difference, it was because salaries weren't considered. And they should have been when the goals were written to begin with.
My only thing with this LCAP for both schools, I, I don't feel comfortable in the sense that it is a little bit too general, not too specific. And the reason why is because considering the amount of questions that we are being asked, how we're spending our money, I think it would be wise, instead of just putting numbers, like, okay, we, we projecting five million, blah, 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 I would like to see a more detailed, in a sense that you could have, and I know it's been done in the past with LCAPs where you can have technology, I don't know, software, whatever, whatever, that will cost twenty thousand. Whatever, the books for whatever, whatever will cost ten thousand. So that way, when the district is looking at all these numbers, they can go back and say, oh, okay, I see why they think this is going to be X amount. And we don't ju, we don't just have a number like this. Because if I'm reading something, technology, what do you mean by technology? What exactly in technology are you referring to? Because like Mr. Jackson was saying not too long ago, it seems that we have that culture of, oh, we thought it was going to be three thousand, but guess what, it's ten thousand. So that doesn't make any sense for us tonight to say, okay, this is okay the way it is, without having clear details of what is going to be done or not.
And I, and I understand what you're saying in that respect. One of the things, in particular with the SV one, Tammy and I had a discussion about this one today. And I apologize because I haven't been able to go back in and look at this one in depth to make some of the changes that, that you were asking for. But we both realize that there needs to be additional actions in here that are more clearly expressing what the expectations are.
Okay.
One of the time constraints that we're operating under is that we must turn this in to the district by Monday. However, we can turn this in and then come back and revisit it and add those actions and re, reapprove a modified plan and resubmit. So, and that is an expectation always whenever you're dealing with any kind of a school plan.
I know that, that the deadline is just right around the corner, but would it be possible to, to vote to approve an LCAP with the understanding that in the limited time that you have left, you will try to tighten some of these things up before submission?
Okay.
I mean, it is...
The answer is yes.
So the reason I think that's important, too, is my understanding of what this for is to measure, you know, ourselves against what we say we're gonna do and the value we're gonna provide to our students. So it's really important to have actionable items that'll provide value, that in the end we can then see how well we did and have a way to measure ourselves against it. We need the benchmark and then the scale moving forward. I think that's really important.
Well, also because it's tied to the budget, so you need to be, you know, consistent. So if you're saying you need ten thousand dollars for teachers, I don't know.
All, all of the items that are listed in the goals are actually linked to the budget. So we can be more specific in those expenditures and, and drill in to do that and get that relatively quickly done. I think if there's, if there's major changes, particularly if it changes the amount of the expenditure, then the board needs to go back and reapprove that before we submit. And I don't, and we don't have time to do that. So you can, you can approve it with the, with the directive to, to further break down the actions into more explicit actions using the goal amounts that we have or the dollar amounts that we have.
What would be a realistic timeframe for us to suggest that if we were to approve this, subject to it coming back to us with greater detail, that we could expect to see the greater detail?
It depends on, on how many, how many meetings you have in July. If you have, if you have one or two that are toward the end of the month, then we could have it completely done by then. Except principals are off, okay. Yeah. I would say the end of July, principals come back the twenty-third.
When did we start working on this? February.
Well, the surveys, the surveys went out, remember that input was taken from the, the advisory councils? Advisory council started to take a look at it and looked at the goals and objectives from last year, determined what they still wanted to have done. The survey went out and those results were analyzed. And, and then those were put into this plan based on that input. And that actually was not started until the end of May, based on gathering input. We also used the input from the administrative team talks. So it, it was the, the collection of the data before the actual document was starting to be written.
So this is due on Monday, by what time?
Tomorrow.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard Kathleen say Monday.
Right, and, and the county told us the second. Yeah, it said Monday, yeah, yeah. Okay. It's typically due on the first, but because the first is on a Sunday, it's due on Monday.
I think the problem for us is, we are, I feel like I'm being pressured to do something that I'm not really comfortable with. And we have responsibilities as board members. So to me, I don't have anything against the, the written part of this LCAP. I understand where you're standing from. However, I've seen others and I know how it's supposed to be done. And I think we need to be very, very careful in how we present things from now, moving forward. Because the tendency is, well, we're gonna do this. This is X, and we don't have anything to support it or back it up. Did we research? Do we know? We don't. And then we brings it in front of the board and say, oh, you know, we need you to approve this. That, we can't, we can't continue that way. It's not possible.
I understand, and I don't have an answer for it.
So I would propose, and by no means am I a fan of another meeting, but since this is due by close of business on Monday, correct? And is it on an electronic filing?
Yes, it can be.
Okay, so I would suggest that afternoon on Monday, and in advance of that, maybe Sunday, the latest, we get a draft of updated LCAP for both schools. And then we meet again on Monday to do a final approval so that we're all on the same page. Because I agree with Priscilla that we can't just approve something because it's due. We should have been reviewing this all along so that we could contribute and making sure this is in alignment and what's right for the students.
I'd, I'd like to make a counter proposal because I just don't think that timing is realistic. What if I withdraw my motion and do a new motion that, that authorizes the filing of this on Monday with the understanding that, that it will get tightened up as much as it can by then? But then in, at the, is it at the end of the July meeting? Or, or the August meeting, we have a fresh copy of this? And, and we, we submit a revised LCAP at that point?
We have to turn something into the county by close of business Monday.
Yes, but that, that, that's part of my motion.
Okay, got it.
That, that it's, that we, we authorize the filing of the LCAP. Generally, as it stands now, with as much cleanup as can happen by Monday, but then we, then we file a, the, the really tight and clean one, we, we file an amended LCAP after our next meeting.
Priscilla, how are you feeling about that?
I'll abstain then.
I'm gonna abstain as well, because I won't, I won't approve something that I know we need to make better and improve on before we submit.
Well, then let me ask this, what's the implications of not filing the LCAP?
We have to file with our authorized...
We have to.
And what if we don't?
Right, right.
We're, we're out, we're out of compliance.
But out of compliance means that we cut off, we lose all funding? Or cut off, we lose a thousand dollars? What's the...
Yes, our local control funding formula, it's actually, it's the basis of everything. And we would not receive LCFF funding, which actually accounts for roughly, I, I wanna say eighty percent of our resources.
The, the LCAP has to be approved before the budget is approved.
So if we, if we approve an LCAP tonight that we don't support, but we approve it in order to be in compliance, what's the process then for any implication if we come back in two months and say, here's our new LCAP, the one that we're going to abide by?
You're not saying it like that. What you're doing is you're going to be approving the LCAP as it is written today. And you're gonna be directing us to bring it back with revisions for a final revised approval of it. It's quite possible that the, when this goes to the county or when this goes to the district, because they go in two different directions, that the district or the county will review it and send it back to us to ask for us to do some changes. And if they choose not to ask us to do some changes, then they will accept it as written. They are the final authority on the approval process.
But what happens if, if we get it back and in August, we as a board look at it and at that point we declare this is the LCAP that we were looking for in terms of budgeting, in terms of benchmarking, in terms of specificity?
We file a revised LCAP.
But Joseph, what if you don't think of it as, you know, hey, this is the document that I'm not gonna support? Think of it as, this is the document, this is not complete?
Well, it looks like as a placeholder is effectively what we're doing. We're doing it in order to be in compliance, but...
So it's that you need more work? This needs more work, this is not complete?
It's not detailed enough.
So you're turning in your project incomplete with the option of turning in the additional details later with no penalty?
But at least if we turn it in, we don't get a homework deficiency.
That's right, six thousand dollar homeworks.
Well, we get paid in July, but it, you know...
Priscilla, how are you feeling about that?
I, I get it, I just don't, this is my position. We've been doing that, like we approve things that are not done properly and then we say we go back to it. I need this to stop. We're either doing something right or we're not doing something right. Because you're waiting until like one day before the budget is due and then you're telling us this is, so basically you're forcing somebody to do something against their will because if you don't do it, then we don't get funding.
Can I, can I...
But, hold on. So I don't have a problem with the, with the LCAP per se. I just don't think it is properly done. If, when I'm reading it, when I'm looking at it, it feels like it was just throwing things in, throwing things that are okay, and then submitted. And I'm not disrespecting anybody, I'm sure you all put your sweat into it. But if it's coming to, if it's the final draft, I expect it to be perfect. I don't have to tell you, or I don't have to direct... or I don't have to direct you to revise or redo or do anything else. That's unacceptable. It's like when we're getting those bills and then we, we asking, where was it? Oh, you know, I forgot it was sitting there, but we, that, we, we can't continue that way. So if it's really gonna be revised and it's gonna be brought back to Kathleen or whatever for her to look at it and make sure that it is actually decent or better than the way it is, I'm okay with that. Because obviously, we don't want not to have the funding. But just bear in mind in the future, I will not approve it.
I would like to make one comment on the, the LCAP. This is appropriately done as far as the, the way it is done and all of the components are there. It's clear that there is more detail that is needed for it to be acceptable by the board, and that is something that I will handle.
Is that would, would this be something that would be appropriate for us to have a committee of the board involved in?
No. No, because each one of these is, is specific to the school site. This is not a board LCAP. Unlike a district that has a district LCAP, this is specific to each school site, and each school site gets to decide their goals and how they spend their money. And although it takes board approval for it to move forward to the next level, it, it is a school site decision.
So I understand that, but why couldn't there be direction given to perhaps Priscilla as a committee chair to provide some QAQC input on that to make sure with her experience that it has the level of detail that the board would be comfortable in approving?
I, I'm gonna suggest that you have people in place to do that, and that it is the responsibility of your employees to do that, your staff to do that. I will take responsibility for not having it in its final form. But that is not, this is not a committee, this is not a board committee. And, and each of the sites needs to be responsible for adding the things that they want to see in the LCAP, in the LCAP, in detail. And, and that's, that has to be, that has, it has to emanate from the site level. And then the board approves the expenditures as they are aligned with the budget. So the budget has to be aligned with the expenditures that are in the LCAP.
Kathy, so we are clear. I, I am not questioning the, the work. What I'm explaining is we need to stop being general. As you know, with a lot of the meetings we've had with the, with our authorizers, that is one of the question. What does that mean? What do you mean by this? So you need to be specific. So if you're telling me, for example, technology, what does that entail? Are you gonna buy software? Are you gonna buy computers? How much is, what's the cost for that?
Understand. I, I understand that. You're asking for more specific detail, and we will bring it back with more specific detail. But in its content form as it is now, it is in the appropriate form.
So can I withdraw my motion and submit a new motion, or is there any more discussion?
You may absolutely do that.
So I withdraw my initial motion. My new motion is to approve the LCAP for Saddleback Valley for submission on Monday with the understanding that as much tightening up is gonna happen between now and Monday will happen. And then we will revisit the, the LCAP at our next board meeting with the possibility of submitting a revised and more complete version.
Now, our next one is potentially on the ninth or the 10th. Do you mean the end of July?
I would, I would like to suggest the end of July because the, we're gonna be focused on the 11th for the next week and a half to two weeks.
Are you looking for the first meeting in August, Josh?
No, I didn't know I had a meeting on the ninth or 10th. Yeah, no, I, I meant the end of July or early August, or the, the August meeting if that's, if that's more appropriate.
All right. The motion is to approve the LCAP as is, subject to it being revised and tightened up as much as possibly before Monday's seminal deadline, with the understanding that a more detailed LCAP will be presented to the board at the August 30th meeting.
Add a line to the budget.
Hand a line to the budget.
That's a very major part. I'm sorry.
Mr. Teeples, is that an accurate statement of your motion?
Yes, very well, so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
This motion passes four zero one.
Can I make a suggestion that because the budget is going to contain both for SV and SOC, that we take number nine next, which is the LCAP for, for SOC campus?
I was gonna make that same suggestion because I assume that we're gonna have the same, the same discussion.
It will. They were, I, they were written, I believe, together. And so they're very similar. There are some differing dollar amounts that are in there. But they are gonna need the same revisions. I just will need to meet with the SOC site to see what their directions and their directives are.
All right. So does anyone want to make a motion to reorder the agenda to have item nine take precedence over item eight with the remainder of the agenda proceeding as stated?
I'll move to do that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This motion passes unanimously. We have so reordered the agenda. Which takes us to item nine. Approve Local Control Accountability Plan LCAP for Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County. As part of the Local Control Funding Formula, LCFF, school districts, county offices of education, and charter schools are required to develop, adopt, and annually update a three-year Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, beginning on July 1, 2014. The LCAP is required to identify goals and measure for progress for unduplicated student subgroups across multiple performance indicators. It is recommended the Board of Directors approve the Local Control Accountability Plan for Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County.
Good.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the SOC LCAP with the same parameters that, that I moved for the, for the SV campus.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
I would like to just say that I, we all appreciate, I, I don't, haven't spoken to you all about this, obviously, but, but Tammy, we appreciate all the effort that went into this. And Garrett and MK and everybody that participated. This is not a little undertaking. I know you guys spent a huge amount of time on it, and I don't want you to take, interpret our wanting to take it to the next level as a commentary on you not doing things. Right? So I just want to be sure we get that out there. This is a huge project.
We're trying to put a lot of resources together.
Yep.
Between about it.
Yep.
Or was not entering. And, and, and surveys. So we don't have to do more than that.
Yep. And so I think with my board-
I don't budget, we can take a little money.
Perfect. And I think what you sense is with, with my boardmates is we, we've got a little bit of history, and so we endeavor for specificity. We endeavor for accountability. We endeavor for, to be able to speak intelligently about what it is that we're doing, not just, hey, we're gonna take some money and do good stuff with it. Right? Because, yeah. I just want you to be sure that we know, everybody knows that. We appreciate their effort.
Any further questions or discussion? All right. The motion for the board is to approve the Local Control Accountability Plan LCAP for Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County, subject to the same revisions as adopted, or conditions as adopted in approving the LCAP for the Saddleback Valley campus. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining?
I abstain.
This motion passes four zero one. Takes us back to item eight. Approve 2018-2019 July 1 final budget for Oxford Preparatory Academy, Saddleback Valley. Oxford Preparatory Academy is required to adopt the final budget for the upcoming fiscal year by July 1 of each year, including a projection of the upcoming year and subsequent two fiscal years, demonstrating fiscal solvency throughout. Presented by Oswaldo Diaz.
What, what you have in front of you is that 2018-19 budget relating to both schools. And of course, we're approving them separately. So let me, let me start by addressing both schools, and I will go specifically to each one of the schools.
Here, here.
This, this, well, first of all, let me start by, by stating that this was a, a process that we worked together both with, with the staff of the schools and the community. We actually had an opportunity to actually hear the community voice out their concerns. In addition to that, we aligned it to LCAP as well. We, we did receive suggestions from the community, the, the comments that were submitted. And also, we worked closely with the staff on, on a day-long meeting where we were actually going over the different aspects of, and, and areas that the staff needed from, from the budget. And of course, as I mentioned during the last board meeting, and where we addressed the, the budget, we are tidying up the budget. We are making sure that we're right sizing the organization and the expenditures. And of course, we're being very fiscally conservative as, as we're doing this. So all of that, all of that was taken into consideration as we were preparing the budget. To start with, I just want to mention that, that some of the one-time non-recurring revenues were taken into consideration as, in the budget. But at the same time, we had enough leadway on, on reserves in the case that the state does not provide those funds. And that was actually one of the comments that Capistrano issued in their, their NOB. And of course, we are addressing it here in the budget as well.
So you're, you're presuming that, that you will get those, those fees, but in the event that we don't, there's enough, there's enough in other areas that, that it won't, it won't kill you.
Exactly. And, and you can see that on the, the surplus that we have at, at the end of each of the schools. We, we were, as we were preparing the budgets, that's one of the things that we were taking into consideration. Another item that was a very big, financially speaking, was the accelerated, accelerated depreciation of the SOC campus. And, and of course, even though this is more of a paper type of expense, because we already, the, the cash was already used for the improvements last fiscal year, this fiscal year, at the beginning of two, the middle of 2017, we are taking that accelerated depreciation on the next fiscal year. But-
But they are accrual basis budgets, so you have, I mean, that's why you're doing it, right?
Yes, of course. And, but what, the bottom line is that we, even with that accelerated depreciation, I wanted to make sure that we had a, a reserve, so to speak, or the surplus at the end of the year, even with that being taken into consideration.
Well, that's, that's a surplus, but you have sufficient cash.
That is correct.
Is, is, is really what the important thing is, right?
Yes. And that's actually what the districts and our authorizers are looking at, even though they, they know that, that this depreciation, depreciation was just more, more than anything gap-related, more than a cash flow type of expenditure. Well, so that, that's the, the context on how we actually started our conversations and we started preparing these budgets. Now, we can go directly to the detail. And if you, if you're so kind as to go to the, the Oxford Prep Saddleback Valley reports, and what we're looking at is the, the ones that are on top, have five-year forecast, final budget. Those are the numbers that we're looking for. And of course, the ones that, that we are approving today is the one labeled 2018-19. The other four years included here is more a forecast than anything, just so, so we can project in the future. But what you're approving today is not the, the five-year, the, the four-year forecast on the budget, but just the budget for this current fiscal year. The other, the other pieces are, are more for comparison, for you to actually take a look at the current year and how it's affecting in the years moving forward. So starting with revenue, we, we had a, overall, we had a decrease in revenue of 192,000 for Saddleback Valley. That's roughly 3.42% of the revenue. And it, it was mostly due because of the, the Champion Village fees that we were receiving in the previous fiscal year and that we're not going to be receiving in the current, the current year. That's line item 8689, other fees and contracts. And that's, that's mostly the biggest impact that it's reducing our revenue for this current fiscal year. And as I mentioned before, taking that into consideration, of course, we, we were budgeting both the certificated salaries that were, the salary increases that were approved by the board. And that had a net effect of 16.64%. That, of course, it's, the position changes, and of course, the, the increase on teachers. There, there's a total variance of increase of $336,000 on teacher salaries. So in the cases of classified salaries, just because of what I have mentioned up to this point, we are decreasing classified positions and salaries, well, and not salaries, but positions, by 44.27%, which accounts to 447,000. So basically, we're going from 1,009,988 to 562,785. And that reduction was necessary in order to maintain a fiscally conservative budget that we're proposing.
But I just want to comment that those salaries are not at the school site. Those are in the open administration.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. That is correct. It's not at the school site, but it's, those are basically administrative.
I was watching the faces out there, and I was like, wait, wait, wait.
Given the, given the, the large decrease in salaries there, I thought, I would have thought that benefits would have gone down as a percentage more than they did.
Well, it's, it's because we have the net effect of both the salary increases for the teachers-
Oh, so yeah, so they, okay. That makes sense.
And the benefits would be the net of the two.
Yep. Thank you. That makes sense.
And that's one aspect. But the other is that, of course, stirs and pears keep on increasing year over year as well.
Mm-hmm.
So moving on to books and supplies. Overall, we, we try to, of course, as I was mentioning before, we met with the staff, the, at the school sites, and make sure that we right-size the expenditures and the expenses that were needed. We went from 320,000 to 253,000. We also had some, some, some agreement services that we also decreased from 32,000 currently to 21,000. Professional consulting services, we mostly remained the same. And this, this is the line item where we have, of course, legal and other expenditures that, that we are maintaining as well. In the case of facilities, we are maintaining more or less same expenditures that we had. We, this year, we had 158,000. We're estimating and budgeting for the next year 153,000, 43,000, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. And in the case of operational, like housekeeping, which is the main, maintenance of the site, we have decreased from 372,000 to 354,000. And that's mostly janitorial services, also utilities, usurers, dues and memberships. So that's the expenditures of the, the site. So total expenses, we have decreased 227,000, which is a decrease of 4.38% compared to last year. And we end up with a surplus of 472,607 for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Any, any questions on, on the specifics of this budget? So basically, what we're, as I was mentioning before, is we, we took a, a very deep dive on our expenditures and very consciously- expenditures and very consciously, we looked at every single line item with the staff and the community as well.
Mr. Diaz, does the account, or the budgeted salaries, benefits, and whatnot for the head office reflect an accounting staff that you need in place to do the kind of work that you've been tasked to do?
Right now, we actually had, we worked on different versions of this budget. One was a little bit more robust, and of course, we were, of course, directed to make sure that we had a very lean type of budget. Right now, I am having a position that is more clerical in nature, and for the work that I need to do, I would require somebody that is more qualified as far as skill set is required.
And what would the impact on this budget be to get you the right person to do the job that you've been tasked to do?
And unfortunately, we don't have that position in our salary schedule right now. And, but just from, just talking from market value, we would probably be talking net, and I'm talking about everything, not only the salary, but it's a full financial impact. It would be around $120,000 because of the benefits, of course.
And in order to account for that, do we have the money in the budget in order to do that?
That position would actually be prorated or allocated between the two schools. Right now, we do have the budget. Of course, what we, our direction is to actually make sure that we right-size the organization, yes. So, that's, we, to answer the question is, yes, we do have it, but with the understanding that, of course, our bottom line is actually going to be reduced by that amount.
Is it still at a healthy level, though, if we staff in accordance with our needs?
It's, that is a question that I would like to get a little bit more clarification, because if you ask a district, is this healthy for the percentage that the district uses? Yes, we would be super healthy, but-
How about the level that an authorizer would use in evaluating a charter?
Oh, yes. We are healthy even with that additional position.
Any further questions or comments?
What?
We're asking questions about the budget, right?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, Oswaldo, you've been around a little while.
Yes.
Not just here, but other places.
Of course.
Yeah. How's this budget look?
It looks pretty lean.
Pretty lean, okay. For an organization of our size.
Yes, and that was the goal, to actually bring it to right-size, to the size of the organization. Correct.
Got it.
Let's say good job.
Thank you.
Good job. Are there any additional comments? Any thoughts on staffing Mr. Diaz, allowing Mr. Diaz to have the accounting and financial support level personnel he needs?
I don't foresee that as optional. I think he needs to have an A-player wing person with him who's very, very capable.
Is that part and parcel to the budget, though? I mean, do we have to decide on that? Don't you have sufficient play in the budget that you could do that if you needed to?
No, we, it would be, the budget would be approved as presented, and, well, we could actually have-
I would be bringing back a job description and a placement on a salary schedule for your approval, and then we can fill it.
So, would we approve the budget as presented because you have sufficient surplus in the budget to fill this position, or do we need to approve the budget with this one revision to account for this additional employee?
I would actually need guidance.
It can be, it can be approved as is, right, the second, because there are some other reductions that we've made that would account for this position, and we would not need a budget revision to be able to account for the position.
So, good.
So, that's Josh telling me to make a motion to approve the budget as is.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest that you approve this budget. It's a solid budget. It is, it is, the ratios that are inside of this budget and the line items reflect a solid budget with a nice ending fund balance that is significantly higher than required by either the district or the state, and gives us operating cash for an amount of time should suddenly our cash flow decline or decrease. So, this is a good budget for SV.
So, I would just like to add one thing in. Let's make sure that for the next meeting we have on calendar, that we have that job description and that addition to the rate schedule, so that there's no delay in making sure Oswaldo has what he needs to be successful.
Will do.
Good point. It is recommended, though, that the Board of Directors approve the 2018-2019-July-1 final budget for Oxford Preparatory Academy Saddleback Valley. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 10. Approve 2018-2019-July-1 final budget for Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County. Oxford Preparatory Academy is required to adopt the final budget for the upcoming fiscal year by July 1 of each year, including a projection of the upcoming year and subsequent two fiscal years, demonstrating fiscal solvency throughout. Presented by Oswaldo Diaz.
Yes, so, if we move to the five-year budget projection, South Orange County report, what you're looking at is, as I was mentioning before, the same thing we are approving on the second column, which is the budget 2018-19. The other columns are there for your reference, of course, the forecast and the current year, as a form of comparison. As you see, also, this budget shows a decrease of total revenue from $7,436,965 to $7,289,19. And the major impact as well is the loss of Champion Village, which was, and I have mentioned this in the past, but during fiscal year 2016-17 brought about $1 million, and last year, it brought about half a million dollars. So, of course, that revenue is no longer considered in the budget. The, going to the expenditures, the certificated salaries have increased 15.15%, a total of $379,659, going from our current budget of $2.5 million to $2.886. And as I mentioned before, this increase was due to the teacher salary increases that the board approved a couple of months back. Going to classified salaries, the classified salaries went from the current year of $1.3 million, $1,358,195, to $662,488. And that accounts for a decrease of 51.22% or the equivalent of $695,707.
But again, that is related to the-
Yes.
-organization loss, not the site loss?
Yes, and thank you for the clarification. I know that sometimes I concentrate too much on the numbers, and there's the other component as well. Thank you. And overall, the benefits, taking that net effect of classified salaries and certificated, in this case, went from $1,245.06 to $1,133,800. In this specific case, it actually went down 8.59% or $106,607. Books and supplies remain more or less constant. We brought it up from $249,000 to $288,000. That's a change of increase in books and supplies of $38,368.
I'd like to draw your attention to one thing and the difference between the SV books and supplies and the SOC, and that's because SV has been operating on a PCSGP grant, which allowed them to purchase all of the, and purchase and adopt and purchase all of the needed textbooks. And that wasn't the case with SOC, so there was a hefty amount put into the core curriculum area of $150,000 that hasn't been there in the past, so that they can do their English, language arts adoption and finish their math adoption.
And in, sorry, lost my, okay, professional consulting services, we actually decreased from $539,249 to $473,834. That's a decrease of roughly 12.13% or $65,415. In the case of facility repairs and others, we, this year, we had a budget of $419,614, and now it's a budget of $401, and it's a decrease of 4.44. And finally, well, we have two additional, but in the case of operations and housekeeping, it remains more or less the same, just with a small decrease of $4,000. As I mentioned before, the accelerated depreciation that were required in accordance with Gap, it's both going to be hitting us this current fiscal year, $428,525, and next fiscal year for $540,000. And that will fully depreciate the leasehold improvements of the SOC campus by the end of the agreement that we have, and that will be renewed by Capistrano Unified. So, that's the big picture of where we're at. As I mentioned before, this is a budget that we worked with the team, and we went through each of the line items and the expenses that actually accounted each one of these items.
I do want to draw your attention to another decrease in the operations and housekeeping under utilities, and the reason for the decrease instead of the increases, like we're used to seeing, is because of the energy efficiency components from POPS 39 that were put into place this year, and you'll start seeing the realization of that next year in an increase to savings for utilities.
Now, finally, one thing that I don't believe it was-
Oswaldo, can you put the microphone a little bit closer to you, buddy?
I'm sorry.
For YouTube land, do you remember, all those people in PJs are depending on us.
Perfect. Another thing that I want to draw the Board's attention to is that in the past, we were not meeting with the school principals to actually go over both the budget process, and that's actually something that the deans were very grateful, that they were involved in this process of actually looking at the numbers and reviewing the numbers and having a say with the numbers. But in addition to that, now that we have this very tight budget, because it is, we are going to have, I am going to personally have those meetings with both chancellors to make sure that not only they're understanding where they are at every month, but that they know if they're getting to a point that they're going to be going over on their expenditures. So, it's going to be a collaborative process between the chancellors and, of course, the CBO to make sure that they know exactly where they are at financially.
All right, so that we can discuss, it's recommended the Board of Directors approve the 2018-2019-July-1 final budget for Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a question. I don't think I picked this up on the SV. Is office expenses our rent?
We actually have rent under the rent line item, and-
What's office expense?
Oh, it's, we have $5601, which is our facility's rent. It's actually the side rental, and $5602 additional rent. That's actually the, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking about object hose. I'm sorry. But yes, that's where we, I'm sorry, where we, yes, okay. And that's where we keep the, our office, our currently Corona office, that we are actually trying to end that contract.
And you allocate those expenses across the-
That is correct, yes. Those expenditures are actually allocated between the two schools.
Based on ADA?
No, it's actually based on a formula, the ADA, but, thank you very much.
I was asking about $5510. It just cut in half. I was just curious what that was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that office?
Office expense.
Thank you very much for the clarification. I'm sorry. I was answering a whole different question. Yes, the office expenditures actually are, the expenditures that we have in our, in our office, in our Corona office, that actually account for paper-
Got it.
-toners and things like that. And of course, just because of how we have structured our office, those expenditures have, will decrease.
Got it.
And just to let the Board know, I always bring my own pens as well.
I do, too.
Me, too.
And plus, you don't have $6,000 worth of homework deficiency.
You should see the pens they use to write those.
That was a typo.
Was it a typo?
Good God.
I was going to get into the printing business.
Like, no wonder, no wonder our academic performance is so fantastic.
We hold these kids accountable.
And if I may add something-
She, like, staple that onto your homework. Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yes. If I may add something, one of the reasons, and of course, this was asked a moment ago, one of the reasons why I really have not been going over the financials with Charaim back is, first of all, of course, for the reasons before stated in previous board meetings. But even as I was reviewing their presentation, I found several errors that I actually mentioned to them, saying, you know, I had to correct all of these errors. And really, I was doing the analysis myself, because I, the value that I was receiving as far as having that conversation with them was more like, let me show you where the errors are, not so much, what can you tell me about my financials. So, as we're moving forward with exit, that it's a more reputable, it's a reputable organization, and they have done this, and they are professionals. And that I can definitely state, that they know what they're doing, and we're going to have a great relationship with them. So, yes, and this error, it's unacceptable, as many of the errors that I found as well.
Okay.
But none of those errors change our financial solvency?
No, they don't.
Thank you.
Because, of course, that-
I mean, obviously, we're now, like, $6,000 better off because of homework issue.
No, no, no. The numbers, I am personally accountable for that, not my back office. Yep.
All right.
And so, when it comes to things like leadership associates, and there's, in the check register, there's, you know, that $10,500, which is the second payment, right? There's also check registry entries in there for $6,700, which doesn't seem to me to be in conformity with their contract, as I recall it. As I recall it, there were two payments, and they were both equal. And so, then, when I see this other sort of oddball payment in there, I wonder what that's for.
Is that for leadership associates?
It's for leadership associates, and it's in, and thank you very much, by the way, for including the batch documents, which I've never seen before. I've never seen that before. And for everybody else here, boardmates specifically, those are the documents that get sent to the back office provider, which are basically the instructions that say, hey, please pay these, you know, kind of thing. And so, I really like that. I really like seeing that. Do you want me to tell you what I'm talking about specifically?
No, I know, oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about something else.
Okay, so, in one of the batch documents, is it all right that- Okay, so, so in one of the batch documents, is there anything to talk about this, Joseph? I'm sorry.
We've got all the time in the world, Mr. Jackson.
So, in, in data batch five oh one, it's five, one, twenty eighteen is the batch document. Right? Number of invoices, four. Where it says, you with me? Where it says sixty-four fifty and forty-three hundred, is that just a broken down? Okay, okay, never mind then. Good, thank you. So that's why I love seeing these, right? Because this is visibility at a level I've never had before. So I love this.
And actually, we have an audience member who we can thank for that, Mrs. Moye.
Who did it? Yay.
Uh, had, had requested more information about how things are broken down. And we had talked about how the batch headers really show how those breakdowns are done. And so that, that's why we began to do that.
Well, keep it up, Ms. Moye. More, make our, make our board packets better all the time, please. This is fantastic. Thank you for that. Sorry.
You're waiting to see what our encore is going to be, right?
All right. We have a motion before the board, which is to approve the July, uh, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, July one final budget for Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County. Is there any further discussion on this matter? If not, I'd like to put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, those abstaining, this motion passes unanimously. Next up is item eleven, approve the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, two thousand nineteen Board of Directors Meeting Calendar. The board is required to approve an annual calendar with designated meeting and workshop dates. The board is asked to approve the annual board calendar with the regular meeting dates, known workshop dates and other known special events.
And just for your information, I know that you know this, but this doesn't preclude you from scheduling other regular meetings or other special meetings, remembering that the definition of a regular meeting is one with seventy-two hours' notice and a special meeting with twenty-four hours' notice. So this doesn't preclude this, but this puts the meeting dates on schedule so that if we have documents that we need to turn in to our authorizer to the state, we are meeting ahead of time to be able to get those approved.
Well, we definitely know we can schedule more meetings.
I'm just saying.
Did you hear that, Josh?
I did.
All right, so that we can discuss this, it is recommended the Board of Directors approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Board of Directors Meeting Calendar. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll move to approve the calendar.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, any discussion?
Couple, a couple of comments, uh, you know, our, our meetings are so long and there's so much on the agenda. Is anyone ever given any consideration to starting them earlier? I, I know people work but like five-thirty, even a half an hour difference would, would make a difference.
I love that idea, but.
I'm not opposed, but I think what I'd like is not to have two o'clock meetings and then a five o'clock meeting and a six o'clock.
Yeah, no, no, no. I, I, I total, totally agree with you. But I mean, a half an hour is a half an hour. It gets you, gets you out of here a half an hour earlier.
Sometimes that's the difference of this board going home on the same day that the meeting started.
True, true. So that, that's one of my comments. I have another, just a couple, a couple of other things on the, uh, the one April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, that should be April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. And June twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen should be June twenty-seven, two thousand nineteen.
Yep.
Um, and there are, I do have a couple of conflicts, but I, I don't know if that matters. I mean, not everyone's going to make every meeting.
Right. Do, uh, do you understand that, that there are a couple of these dates where there are two dates given to you? Um, and so you need to choose between the two dates. Uh, for example, if you go down to the bottom, uh, you'll see Thursday or Wednesday, May sixteenth or May twenty-second. And, um, you need to choose one of those two days. And then you also see up at the top, uh, a Monday or Tuesday, July ninth and July tenth. And the rationale behind this particular July meeting, usually you do not meet in July, is to, um, take, uh, any actions that might be necessary prior to the public hearing for the SOC revocation.
December thirteenth is the same week as CCSA or CCSD conference?
CSBA.
Uh, the one, the one up in San Francisco, the California Charter School Development Conference.
Oh, okay.
That's Monday and Tuesday that week. I'm just not sure if-
And that's December? We have to have a meeting right in that timeframe because our, um, we have the, um, first interim due to the, the district on December fifteenth and our, uh, is our audit then due as well? What's due on the December fifteenth?
Oh, oh, we do financials.
Our audited financials are due. First interim report. So, so we have to meet that week, um, to get those things done because they're due by the fifteenth.
And actually, the, uh, that, uh, meeting that, uh, you're talking about, I, I don't believe it's a CCSA meeting.
No, it's a CCSD, I'm sorry.
I think it's CSBA. Oh, oh, okay. The Charter School Development, okay.
Not that I have anything against that.
That sounds like a conversation at another time.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion that we, that we have kind of little mini votes on, on these two decisions that we have to make? And then a mini vote on if we should have, uh, if we should start the meetings at five-thirty instead of six?
How about five?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that too.
All right, let's do the mini votes. Um, are we going to go date by date or?
Uh, I, my proposal is just there's, there's two, there's two, uh, the July ninth or tenth and then there's the May sixteenth or May twenty-second. So, and then there's the time change consideration.
Okay, so July ninth or July tenth?
I prefer July ninth.
I'm okay with the ninth, but I have a meeting at eight-thirty that night.
That night?
That night.
So I'm not good with either of those dates.
What about the twelfth? Thursday the twelfth?
Well, that's after the day.
Oh, and when is it, when is it?
The, the idea is to meet beforehand in case there's any action that we need to take ahead of time.
Can we do it next week to be proactive and not up against any law?
That's the fourth of July week.
Do you guys want to do, can we do, uh, one of those doodle things?
I can. I can send it out and do that.
Put all these dates in there?
Yep.
Is that cool, Josh? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
That way we can all know very quickly who's available and coordinate calendars. I feel like it's going to take us a long time to go through this.
So how would we approve this schedule then? We'll just say the first one is on a date to be determined?
Can we table it pending?
Well, that would, that doesn't have to be our official July meeting. That's just sort of an emergency meeting.
Yeah, can we just, can we just do that with a twenty-four hour notice and not have it on this calendar?
Three-day notice.
Well-
Yeah, our authorizers have both asked us to have regular meetings with three-day notice.
So why don't we take this first one off of the calendar and then we can just schedule one with three-day notice, uh, before the, before the, uh, the hearing?
I'll send out a doodle invite.
Okay, so we'll strike that first one.
All right, we'll doodle on it.
And then the first, the next one is May sixteenth or May twenty-second. I don't know if I really care about those.
And this one, we were working around, um, the Memorial Day weekend.
When is Memorial Day?
It's the twenty-seventh.
I'm not, I'm not in town. I won't be there.
Neither of those dates?
I can do either one.
Like I said, not everyone's going to make every meeting, so I've got a couple that I can't make, so I don't really care either one. Do you guys care? May twenty-second?
Sure.
Okay.
May twenty-second, it's a Wednesday.
Okay.
And then, uh, my, yeah, my, my proposal to start the meetings at five instead of six.
I'm, uh, definitely involved with that. I think that's a great idea.
I second that.
Mr. Jackson?
I cut into my sushi time. Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Are we going to get your sushi delivered here?
I'm good. I would love that.
We'll go get sushi for lunch, Mr. Jackson.
I would have to, so.
Okay, so did, did I make the motion? I think I made the motion, so I'm going to withdraw my motion and make a new motion. My new motion is to, uh, approve the, uh, the, the calendar of the regular Board of Directors meetings. We're going to strike the first meeting on there. We're going to choose the May twenty-second, uh, two thousand nineteen date, a couple of those little changes to those years. And then we are going to set the closed session to start at, no, that doesn't-
The meeting will start at five.
The meeting will start at five, at which point we'll go right into closed session with the open session starting at six.
Or, well, we don't have to waste the time we're going to start.
All right, I'm just going off what's on here, but, however, the, the meeting will start at five, that's the point.
All right. Do I have a second to Mr. Teeples' proposal?
I second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Man, none in Idaho, I appreciate it.
All right. Item twelve, approve extension of Momni Cafe LLC contract for consulting services. The board is being asked to approve an extension to the contract with Momni Cafe LLC beginning July one, two thousand eighteen through August thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, presented by Kathleen Doherty.
Um, this is just a two-month contract because I am going to optimistically assume that, uh, we will have, uh, a new ED and, um, a new chancellor that can, uh, be transitioned prior to August thirty-first. And, um, the board can always extend any, uh, specific hourly or daily time following this as necessary to work with, um, either a renewal process or, um, a revocation or an appeal process. The rate stayed the same.
What's materially different?
Uh, there is one material difference and that is on the contract for, um, the consulting for the general consulting and not for any interim placements, that the reimbursables, I had a cap on the reimbursables and, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm removing the cap on the reimbursables because I am doing a lot of out-of-pocket expenses because of the number of days that I am having to be down here. Uh, and that includes airfare or airfare changes and lodging. To date, I haven't been charging for any, um, any meals or, um, any travel to and from airports, et cetera. And I also don't charge for any time at the house.
So we need to have a mo- motion in order to-
It's because her cellphone doesn't work at our house, that's why.
Yeah, well, it does if I stand correctly. But that includes email.
In order to discuss this, we need to have a motion to approve the extension of the contract between Oxford Preparatory Academy and Momni Cafe LLC for consulting services. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. I have one question. Why is our dispute resolution have us going to Yolo County? I don't anticipate us taking advantage of this provision, but I'm curious why we would be going to Yolo.
Um, because I forgot to take that out.
Can we change that to orange?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And Joseph, are you finished? That's all your question?
Although Yolo County is kind of a neat little county, oh, sorry.
Most of Joseph's contracts, he likes to have the dispute resolution in Fiji, so you can go there and figure it out.
As often as I can speak at him.
It was in the supporting documents. It's not in the actual document.
Uh, one point oh term of contract says from February first through April thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
One of the things that I did was I attached the original contracts for you to see what was referred to. So the, what you're approving is the extension, which is the first page.
I cut the same thing. I think it's just-
Yeah, those, those are, I just wanted you to see the contracts in case you forgot what they look like.
So, two, two-three-two says additional fees is needed there. Two-three-three says other fees and charges, air travel and rental necessary to be on site for the ten days not to exceed this. And obviously that's superseded by-
The new one. So what I, what I had done is, is attached the backup documentation for you to see what you had approved prior.
I love that you do that.
And the provision in here for interim chancellor at six hundred and fifty dollars a day, that's, uh, Michelle continuing.
That's current as needed, yeah. And, and the assumption is, is that that won't be, but just in case.
Okay.
And anytime there's a, since we're talking about things that we love to see in the board packet, I would love to see a copy of the contract. So if we're making payments for ten, ten or fifteen thousand dollars or whatever, would be awesome to still, so I can look right at that contract to say, hey, is that good?
Say that again.
So, for example, the leadership associates contract, I would like that to be in here because we're, there's big payments in there. So it's nice to know that that's in, these payments are being made in conformity with that contract.
Gotcha. Okay, for backup, yeah, that's fine.
I, I need additional clar- uh, clarification from the board about this. What is the threshold amount?
For leadership?
No, for, uh, because, uh, what I'm understanding is that, uh,
You want to see the contract for three hundred dollars?
I don't, it's, what, what do you say, five thousand?
No, we said fifteen thousand on our policy.
That we don't want to see any backup contract for anything less than fifteen? I'm not asking for who can approve it. Just who can see it. Because if, when I'm looking at the, when I'm looking at the check register basically and I'm seeing big, big checks, I like to see why.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson?
I'm bugging. You just looked at me like I'm bugging. Joseph has a, he has a I'm bugging face.
You're definitely not bugging. Now, some of these contracts I can imagine would be rather prolonged and these binders are not, they're just one and they look to be in the one-inch variety.
So can we get them in the electronic documents?
I was going to see, would you request, maybe modify that request?
Oh, yeah, that'd be better. I, that would be better, actually.
And now we're not bugging. All right. Any further questions or discussion on this matter? So the motion before the board is to approve the extension of the contract between Oxford Preparatory, oh, wait, sorry. There was a modification.
There was?
Yes.
Oh, Yolo.
I'm sorry, I, I have a quick question.
It's in the original contract.
So I noticed that it says it's through August thirty-first unless extended by mutual agreement. If we were to find an ED, and I know it's aggressive, but is there also a clause that we could add that would say if we need it to terminate sooner, that we could do that as well? So we have flexibility on both sides?
It, it's in the, um, original contract. So the only change to the, the contract is that the, um, the time is extended and the reimbursement is, cap is taken off.
Yeah, I think it was mentioning the first, the original, which is-
Sorry, we were coming on Yolo. It's section sixteen of a most recent addendum. I think it's the third addendum. Please. Um, and we could choose any mediator. It could be JAMS or AAA, don't care.
This contract should be from February through April unless ended at an earlier date or extended by mutual agreement.
AAA does mediation? I love that. That's the best forty bucks a year. And solid restaurant reviews at the end. They're the monthly magazine, so. Okay.
Yeah, it says to, unless, I don't know, anything else, so.
It's written in mutual agreement?
Yeah. She was asking if we needed to amend it earlier.
Yeah, because she's referring, this is the original contract, but-
Right, the, the only-
Yeah, it's actually changed from mutual now to either party now.
So I think, I think the solution here is, is that, uh, section one point one of the original contract would also need to be amended to say February one, two thousand eighteen through August thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, unless ended at an earlier date or extended by a mutual agreement.
So change this first page to say unless ended at, at an earlier date.
Well, I think the, the, uh, the addendum supersedes the document that it's addending.
Well, you could either, yeah, you could either do that, you could add another change down here from original contract or you could put it into the, into the addendum until August thirty-first, two thousand eighteen unless extended by mutual agreement or ended earlier.
Or ended earlier, yeah.
This binder sucks.
We want an agreement addendum.
It's driving me. I shouldn't have included the other ones. I should have just did this one. It was easier. But I will, if you approve it with that change to the addendum, that'll be easy enough to add in and then I'll get it adjusted to something.
So we need a new motion for that?
Yes. We're collecting that in Yolo.
In the original.
So who made the last motion?
I think you have to.
Who's going? That was clever.
Weren't you talking though? You were the saint that, so.
But I didn't make the motion, I was trying to.
He made the original motion to approve it.
Yeah, I'm the second. No, I don't have it, I mean, it can be, but. I'll do it and send it to you, I'll send it to you. Let me see if that is the same.
I'll take his phone, it's.
It, you know, the, the original one.
Yeah, the, the IT one's terrible.
Yeah. I was for the thirty one, so. Yeah.
I'm gonna text him.
I think he has his phone too, we should text him.
Nope. It's all texting. Bit easier. I'll call him on his app phone.
It's probably five, five o'clock.
And I can go outside where it's not, he agrees.
Oh boy.
Yay.
Wonder why we're so quiet.
Can you withdraw your motion, Mr. Jackson?
Sure, I can.
Will you?
Right away.
All right.
All right. Welcome back.
Thank you.
I did.
The board meetings are lively with you. Now.
It's hot in here.
It is, really hot in here.
It's very hot. Uh, so I'll ma- I'll make a new motion to, to approve the Momni Cafe contract with the change of, of jurisdiction in the event of a, of a conflict and the revision to the, to the contract to reflect that, that it could be ended at an earlier date than, than August thirty first, two thousand eighteen.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? This motion passes unanimously, takes us to item thirteen, approve extension of Charter Tech contract for services. The board is being asked to approve an extension to the contract with Charter Tech for data recovery, including communications and infrastructure, refinement and or security, ensuring safe and compliant information technology services, beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, through August thirty one, two thousand eighteen, presented by Kathleen Doherty.
This is a simple extension to the original contract at the same price for services and because we do not currently have a director of IT, so.
All right, do I have, it is recommended the board of directors approve the extension of the contract between Oxford Preparatory Academy and Charter Tech for IT services, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, you can tell this was written by an IT guy, this is the worst contract I've ever seen, but since it, since it's only here for another, for another month, um, I, I'm fine with approving it after striking point seven and point nine.
Point seven? You mean seven and nine?
Seven and nine, yeah.
Why would you want to, okay.
That, that point seven's the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen in a contract.
I love that they put that in there.
Well, but seven is actually not a bad provision. That, what it's saying, although admittedly not in an artful manner, is that the writing shall trump all prior discussions.
Right.
So then it should be modified to reflect.
But it says if you.
Look, I would like it if people, more and more people wanted to pay the legal profession to provide documents, I'd be very happy, but.
Okay, but what I would like to get is, I would like to get access to these detailed invoices, though, because it says that we're paying for up to four days a month, I want to be sure that we're using all four days a month.
And then some, yeah.
All right, so what is it costing us right now?
He has flat fee, so.
No, it's not.
Thirty-two hundred dollars a month, yeah.
Well, it's thirty-two hundred dollars a month for up to this and then more after that.
Eight hundred a day after four days.
Yeah, but he hasn't been charging us for anything.
But he could.
So, and I recall in, in our discussion a, a couple sessions ago, that there was gonna be a report that he provided with the summary of our vulnerabilities, where we needed to update IT, so that we would understand a path to move forward on if in fact we chose to move forward, so do we have that report to move forward from?
That's your memory of a verbal discussion. That's why she's asking for the writing.
I will get a report for you for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And what's our plan on a go-forward basis? Is it to fill this position in-house?
Is to fill the position however we can, we're advertising for it as soon, now that the board has approved the job description, now we can put an advertisement out, and, and I believe he intends to apply, but it's open to anybody else who wants to apply at that point in time, too.
Who tends to apply?
This company.
They're gonna apply for our IT position?
Corporations are people.
Yeah.
Oh.
Perfect, huh?
Yeah.
We have to follow feet, man.
You can, you can choose to fill the position with a person, or you can choose to fill it with a independent contractor or organization.
Mr. Jackson, you're making faces.
You're bugging.
That's beside the point.
All right, let's do this.
All right, we have a motion for the board that has been seconded to approve the extension of contract between Oxford Preparatory Academy and Charter Tech for IT services, all those in favor say aye.
What about what?
With Josh's modification.
Would Josh's modifi-, well, but I don't think we want seven out.
Rewording, maybe reword it for them so that it's more reflective of what its intent is as we understand it.
Can you suggest some wording?
Yes. Oh, no, actually, I can't because I'm not allowed to practice law before the board. But Jerry certainly would have that language.
Give it to me, I'll have it. I can't.
Just generally speaking, doesn't RGC review all, any and all contracts that we sign?
I believe we ask that that be done.
Has that been done for these?
No, legal has not reviewed this contract, this was simply an extension of a prior contract.
Was that reviewed?
And I don't remember, I don't believe legal looked at that one either.
So I think the, 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 maybe we, the motion should be something like, like, we'll, we'll approve it, um, subject to review by RGC.
That's fine.
Do we want to do that with the Momni Cafe contract as well?
Well, that one, the contract has already been approved.
We're just extending it.
We're just, well, that's what we're doing here, this one's an extension of an existing contract.
Yeah, but, oh, okay, I see what you mean.
So shouldn't we have all of the contracts reviewed to be consistent?
But was, was your original contract reviewed by, by outside counsel, Kathy?
Yes, actually YMCA wrote it.
So I don't, I don't think there's any material modifications to, to that one.
It just wasn't as Yolo County.
Did they write it on our behalf?
No, they did not.
We paid that?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We paid.
They, they did, they, they did, they wrote my original one that I did two years ago.
So they, you use their form?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, on your behalf.
Understood.
Based on your memory of a verbal conversation.
That would be funny.
That wasn't what I was concerned about.
No, I was thinking of the, you know.
So I would suggest that these subcontract agreements do get reviewed before we.
Uh, staff is going to need additional clarification, uh, do, are we talking about a certain threshold and above or any contract?
I think any contract that, that binds the organization to, to payment for services.
Well, because there could be something scary in there, but I, I think anything above the threshold that an ED can just sign, is that fair?
For example.
There you go.
I've, do we have something come here that's, right, because the concern is, for example, if we hired Pest Control to come here, and I'm just using an example from a client, who would send me their Pest Control contract for a hundred dollars, do we want that to be sent off and have our attorneys spend more money reviewing the contract for a one-time contract for a hundred dollars? I mean, relative to minor exposure to us?
That's a fair enough point. What about anything over the amount that the ED can approve? Which isn't that currently five or ten thousand dollars?
It's ten.
It's ten.
Ten thousand dollars with the CBO.
Because Pest Control's less than ten thousand.
So why are we, why are we even seeing this contract with this fellow, with the, the SIT guy?
Because I like to bring all contracts forward.
Got it, but really, it's below the threshold, you could have just approved it.
It is below the threshold, yes it is.
It's below her threshold, she could have just approved it.
I just believe that the.
But maybe not the total value of the contract, maybe just, it's not about.
Well, it's an open-ended contract because of the eight hundred dollars per day, so he could have easily.
She spends twenty days next, next week, not next month.
Right, so even though the initial one-month value of it is less than her threshold, I feel like it's kind of the, whatever we think the total value of the contract is over that amount.
Maybe the way we, we handle this is that we direct staff to have a conversation with our legal counsel about the level of contracts that should be reviewed, based upon where they believe there is exposure, and then they can report that back to us.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
I like that, that's a good, that's a good suggestion.
With the money attached, how much that will cost us, too.
What, have the conversation with the attorney or to, to review each contract?
To have the, yeah.
Well, the conversation with the attorneys can be three hundred bucks or three hundred something.
Well, we don't know that.
It's probably a half-hour call, call.
Just so we remember that, too.
It's a half-hour call and then a forty-five minute email.
Well, but I, I think that, I think Jerry will be honest and tell us, you know, the dollar value, that it doesn't make sense for him to bill, you know, a half hour of his time to review a hundred dollar contract. He'll tell, know what the exposure is, but things such as, uh, the people that took over Champion Village, where they're gonna be operating a program with after-school and children, and that's, even though, even if the dollar value had been low, would, told us that there's, you know, some liability potential because of, you know, the care of feeding of children, so.
I agree with you, and that, you know, that's kind of why I brought this up with this, I mean, and that's why I like, don't like his point, his last point, because, I mean, if he does something silly with the IT, I mean, things that could cause a lot more exposure than the thirty-two hundred dollars he's trying to limit it to.
Awesome, well, Kathleen, thanks for bringing it to us, even though it may have seemed technically below the ten thousand dollar threshold.
And, and again, philosophically, I believe that the board G C all confirms whether or not it's below the threshold or not, and that's what I've been operating on my, or.
All right, so the motion is to approve this, subject to review by legal counsel.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, this motion passes. Oh, did we want to do that, though? I, I understand Jerry wrote your contract originally, but he didn't review it on behalf of our organization.
No, he did not, it was a template that was, he, I, I used from his office.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that, that our vote, and maybe I'm wrong, was just to approve the addendum, not the contract, so I'm not sure if, if a contract review is needed at, at that point.
I agree, but I was just saying this was an addendum as well for Charter Tech.
Correct, and, and theoretically, we did, we don't need a, don't need a, a, a review of that one either, but, but this was just written so badly that I took offense to it.
I, I will pass that along to Charter Tech.
I, I, I thought that Kathy's addendum was, was sound.
Okay.
In other words.
All right.
That actually was written on YMCA too. It's not for here.
Item fourteen, approve extension of Chris Bertelli Public Affairs contract for services, the board is being asked to approve an extension to the contract with Bertelli Public Affairs and Education Public Affairs Consultancy for Communications and or Publicist Services, beginning July two thousand eighteen through December thirty one, two thousand eighteen, presented by Kathleen Doherty.
And so this is an extension to the, uh, contract for, um, Bertelli, um, to continue on, this one is for six months, and, um, although in our original agreement, he was going to be increasing the price, should he decide to extend, in this agreement, he has said that the price and everything in the original contract will, will remain the same and remain in force until December thirty first, unless earlier terminated, and that early termination is by either party, and that's Bertelli Public Affairs. So I have included the original contract overview, scope of work, and then the original independent contractor agreement with this, this is not new, this is the original.
But I guess I don't understand, what are we approving then if this is the original one or?
You're approving an extension to December thirty first, and so he did not send me anything formal other than this email that said that, because we had had discussions about it, so that, that I am, you're approving the extension for six months based on this email communication. And in this email, he identifies that the term is the same and, and, uh, all of the language and proposals for services.
We don't.
Yeah, it does.
The we don't.
Oh, what do you mean? Sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you had it in this. Okay, it says, hi Kathleen, for our recent conversation and section ten point two of the attached contract, this note serves as my acknowledgement of our agreement to amend our contract. Section one point one shall be replaced with the following language, this agreement takes effect immediately as of the effective date and remains in full force until, in fact, until December thirty first, two thousand eighteen, the term, unless earlier termination under this section. As, on all of the language in the contract and proposal remains the same, your acknowledgement of this email will serve as the necessary approval to enforce the change, please let me know if you have any questions.
Was this contract originally reviewed by outside counsel, by general counsel?
Um, I'm gonna say no.
So I guess the, my motion is to approve this, subject to review by GC.
Okay.
I would also suggest that we, um, adjust the timeframe to three months, not six months through the end of the year, in the event we do identify the new ED, they may not need the same services, this may be something they have, you know, other ideas for, or they can do themselves, depending on who it is.
How about, how about we approve it for three, three months with a, an option of renew it for an additional three months?
Yep.
We do have a thirty-day termination, right?
Oh, true.
Oh, I didn't.
And so, you know, since we're getting, since we're getting the good rate, it might be good to lock it in.
So that, that doesn't make sense, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, fair point.
Okay.
So.
So I think I've made a motion, official, is that official?
I think it's official. I was just gonna add that at this time, our, our petition online has five hundred and ninety-two supporters, we are almost sixty percent of our way to our one thousand votes. I was hoping now because I was gonna try to be number one thousand, but maybe I'll go ahead to it now. All right.
I was number one.
I noticed that. I was gonna do five hundred, but someone beat me to that, so I thought one thousand would be a capstone. All right. All those in favor of the amended Bertelli Public Affairs contract say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously.
I'm gonna suggest that we table number fifteen.
Okay. Okay. The interim executive director has requested that we table item two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen staffing recommendations, do I have a motion to so do that?
I'll motion to table.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any comments, questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously, it takes us to item sixteen, board of directors agreement, the board is being asked to discuss board governance agreements, presented by Kathleen Doherty.
I bring this back because one of the items that we have been talking about since the new board took over April fourth has been our governance handbook agreements and the components within that agreement that talks about board jobs and the agreements that we have on how we operate. This was an item that was, um, listed as in our NOV as not being acceptable to the authorizer because it was only a shell of a document and we hadn't done anything with it. So I'm going to suggest that we take a look at those agreements, at this point in time, we can discuss them now, but I'm gonna ask that in our next meeting, we come back prepared to either approve or change them, so we can get started on the process of having them in place.
Do we have those? It's, it's behind the. It's, it's behind the, there's not a tab, it's behind the last, it's the very last document, behind.
Oh.
Back, back, back. Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Can we comment on this, even though we're not voting?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a national identity.
Okay. This, to me, this seems like something that we ought to workshop, that they, uh.
Absolutely.
That we should be sitting down and having these conversations about what's our common vision? And, you know, how do we determine if we've been effective, and, you know, I think taking this is very hel- this is very helpful information, but I think seeing other examples would be helpful and seeing sort of the world in which people approach these various issues, various issues, and then having this conversation as a board about what it is we're agreeing to, um, I think is different than just coming back at our next meeting ready to vote to approve one of these.
And I, and I agree wholeheartedly, we need a workshop on it, I was, uh, when I was doing the agreements in the agreement piece, it's only one little piece of this handbook are those agreements, however, um, I'm gonna suggest then that we use the second meeting in July as a workshop to do this.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, moved on to item seventeen, annual board organization and selection of officers. Per section fifteen of the eighth amended bylaws, the board of directors shall, quote, meet, quote, shall meet annually for the purposes, purpose of organization, appointment of officers, and the transaction of such other business as may properly be brought before the meeting. This meeting shall be held at a time, date, and place as noticed by the board of directors in accordance with the Brown Act, unquote. Election of officers.
This is typically done in June, and I know that, uh, this is a recently newly elected board, and I realize at the time that everyone took office, that it was with the understanding that it would be for more than four months, but I'm gonna suggest as a part of our bylaws that we formalize the next year's officers, even if everyone remains in place. And, um, there is one noticeable position missing, because that is in the new bylaws. We moved the position of treasurer to the new CBO, and so now it is just the board secretary, the board vice chair, and the board chair.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Joseph Haney be, uh, elected the board chair, can I do that?
Absolutely.
A second?
Do we do them all right now at once, or do we do them one by one?
You can do them all at once or one by one, it's your choice.
All right, well, I'm gonna return the favor, and I would like to nominate Mr. Raymond Jackson to be our vice chair.
A second then?
And I'd like to nominate Priscilla Trichet to be our secretary.
Second then?
All right. So the motion before us is to elect the following persons to the following officers. Be it resolved, board directors elects, elects Joseph Haney to serve as board chair. Be it resolved that the board of directors elects Raymond Jackson to serve as board vice chair. And be it resolved that the board of directors elects Priscilla Trichet to serve as board secretary. Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah.
The count, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously, all right.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Or are you talking about the adjournments, that's the part I'm pretty excited about. All right.
Me too.
It's recommended the board of directors adjourn the regular board meeting for June twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
This motion passes, this meeting is adjourned at ten twenty P M.